Good evening. This is the May 26, 2021, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome, everybody. Before we start the meeting, I have an announcement. I want to make everybody aware that the second public hearing, I will be recusing myself from participating. I have a prior association with the applicant, and I don't want there to be any question or appearance of conflict of interest. So our second vice chair, Mike Nelson, will run that portion of the meeting, and then I'll rejoin after the meeting. So I just wanted to let everybody know that we would be doing that. So first item on the agenda is approval of the May 12, 2021 minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections?
We have a couple of scrum ears that we've already given.
Okay, and you've got those, Jennifer, okay?
I have one other minor one, but...
Oh, go ahead. Okay, so I guess what we'd like is a motion to approve the minutes with corrections. So do we have a...
Similar.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second?
Second.
Okay, so Nels, second. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The next item on our... Oh, wait, until Joel gets back to the... Okay, have you got everything you need, Jennifer?
Oh, who did...
Oh, Victoria was the motion second by Nels. And all in favor, Rich abstained. Okay, great. So second item on the agenda is the public comment period. Anybody that would like to speak before the commission for issues that are not before us this evening would be welcome to come to the podium to speak. It looks like everybody here is probably for the public hearings, so we'll pass on that one. So that leads us to item three, which is public hearing proposal for preliminary subdivision plat for property generally located east of the intersection of Third Avenue and Sixth Street within city of Moscow. Permit application, LUP 2021-0016. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commission members. So before you tonight, we have a preliminary plat proposal from Itani Development. It's for Rolling Hills Ninth Edition. 2.3 acre area in size. Preliminary plat is to create 10 lots ranging from a little over 7,300 square feet to 8,461 square feet in size. And just a little bit of background, you may have noticed in your packet this evening, like the neighborhood meeting, there's a much larger area. The applicant originally submitted a proposal for a subdivision plat, also included the six acre area of land directly to the east of this subject property. It was intended to create 29 single-family lots with an average lot size of 9,300 square feet. Also included the extension of Third Street across a portion of the property adjacent to Mosher Park. And the applicant and staff could not reach an agreement for the property exchange or the realignment of Third Street through that property. So the applicant decided to move forward with the preliminary plat for just the first phase of the proposed subdivision instead of the entire 8.3 acres, so just the initial 2.3. And this is the subject property highlighted in red in the center of your screen there. This is a photo from 2018. So a lot of these houses, a lot of these vacant lots here have been constructed with single-family dwellings. The property directly to the north here is the Harvest Hills Second Edition, which was recently approved by the commission and council to be developed. This is the Mosher Park property, a little over five acres in size. And this was the additional six acres that was originally intended to be a part of this proposal tonight. To the south, you have Rolling Hills Developments, so Itani Drive, Notty Court, primarily R2 residential development. We've got Panorama Drive here to the southeast. Just a closer view of that property. And then a topography map. Those are all one-foot contour lines represented there. So it certainly doesn't gain elevation, but reduces elevation as you head to the north. Looking at the current comprehensive plan, land use designation, it's currently designated as auto-urban residential. What that says in the comp plan is it's primarily a single-family detached lots ranging from 7,000 to 11,000 square feet in size, typically more isolated from surrounding land uses, requires automobile transportation. Includes those areas generally anticipated to be developed for low to moderate density residential uses at densities between three to six units per acre, and then it also could include a mixture of the single-family, twin home, townhouse, residential dwellings. And then it points to appropriate zoning designations, which would be the R1, R2, or R3 zones. Looking at the current zoning designation, it's R2, entirely surrounded by the R2 zone as well. And the zoning code states that R2 is appropriate in the following circumstances: where single-family dwellings predominate the area, terrain is not harshly irregular, smaller lot sizes can be accommodated without extensive earthwork, utilities and other public facilities are adequate for the densities allowed, and the existing lot development patterns and policies embodied in the comprehensive plan also guide the application of that zone. Really, it's primarily a single-family zone. There are other uses allowed, primarily urban agriculture uses, so market and community gardens, group childcare facilities, and public parks and recreation facilities. The preliminary plat proposal is 10 single-family lots. We discussed the range in lot sizes previously. For the R2 zone, the minimum lot size is 7,000 square feet, so all the proposed lots meet that, as well as the minimum lot width, which is 60 feet. Third Street is designated as the collector, which means it's a 34-foot wide street section. There are bike lanes on both sides of the street. No on-street parking is permitted. And curb gutter and sidewalks on both sides as well. So this brings us to the preliminary plat. Four lots to the north of Third Street and six lots to the south. You can see the Mosher Park property here to the northeast and the undeveloped property here to the east. The existing lots to the west are in Rolling Hills Eighth Edition. And just a closer view of those proposed lots. And then the grading plan. Water service in the area already is extended on the Third Street extension. Will also be extended along Third Street alignment for these proposed lots. Our 2012 comprehensive water system plan indicates that the existing system is adequate for potable as well as fire flows. And then sanitary storm sewer. There are mains that currently exist in Third Street alignment. Our 2011 comprehensive sewer system plan indicates the existing system is adequate to serve the additional flow that would come from the proposed lots. And stormwater runoff control standards apply. And that's really a purpose of one of the conditions that you'll see later on. It's not really addressed in this preliminary plat proposal. Parkland dedication has previously been dedicated with Mosher Park to the northeast, so no further dedication is required. And staff's recommendation is that the commission conduct the public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, recommend approval of the proposed preliminary plat with two conditions. The first one is pertaining to stormwater, so the applicant shall provide stormwater control analysis and design in accordance with the city's stormwater runoff control standards. And then the applicant shall extend Third Street 19.87 feet to the east to align with the eastern property boundary of Lot 6, Block 2 of the proposed subdivision. So as it currently exists, it stops that distance short of the eastern boundary of the furthest eastern lot, which is Lot 6. And we'd recommend that be extended. So in accordance with the commission's decision on the preliminary plat, direct staff to prepare the RCS document. And I'd certainly try to answer any questions that you have.
So anybody have questions for Mike? Mike, one of the things that... You mentioned that in Dwight's letter on the parkland dedication, that it had all been dedicated even for the entire project through all the phases. And that is Mosher Park is that dedication?
Yeah, Mosher Park is part of that, yep.
And wasn't that also a part of the Harvest Hills dedication?
It wasn't, no. The Harvest Hills dedications had the, if you recall, there's a 35-foot wide strip on the east side of Mountain View, as well as a 25-foot wide strip there for the linear park, as well as in the center of the larger cul-de-sac, one-way cul-de-sac. At the very end of the street, there was an island park.
Great. Okay, anybody else have questions for Mike? Okay, that's great. Thank you, Mike. So with that, we will begin... I'm sorry? I was just getting ready to start the public hearing, and then you can come up and address us as soon as we get started. So with that, we will declare the public hearing open, and we'll start with hearing from the applicant.
My name is Rafiq Itani. I know a few of you. We've been in Moscow since 1996, developing that 100 acres that we have. And when we bought this land, of course, we had a master plan. And if you look at the history of our development, from 1 to 9, we certainly followed that master plan to the letter. So I really don't... I mean, the presentation was excellent. If you... It's simple, because we're running out of lots. We need to have continuation of the business we're in. And we had a meeting with the neighborhood. And I think generally, I didn't hear any negative comments from the neighborhood, but I felt that the neighborhood were satisfied. I basically told the neighborhood, and I'll tell you here, that what you see on Sixth Street and Itani Drive and Third Street that's going on right now, an hour section of town, you'll see the same thing, basically, on those. We don't sell lots. Normally, we don't sell lots. We build all the houses. So we have little control as to what transpires there. And as I said, the neighborhood was pretty graceful. There were no issues that we could not address with the neighborhood. And so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Itani? Okay, great. Thank you very much. We'll move now to hearing from anybody that has issues that they would like to address in support of the project. And yes, sir? And if you would please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is John Wright from 2518 Itani Drive. And thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak. Both my wife and I are totally in support of the subdivision as it's being proposed, and appreciate the fact that there is a very long-term master plan that has been being worked. And so we encourage your support of that. I think I just have one question. I'm kind of new to the area and how things work here. So our house butts up along the, probably the south side of the subdivision there. And there is a topographical decline, as you're up above on the ridge, that will be going down into these lots. And I would just like to be able to understand, it's not a point of contention or anything, but understand how retaining walls will be built between this plat and the houses up above. Who's responsible for those? Is it the builder, or will it be the new homeowners? That kind of thing? So...
I'll have to defer to you on that one, Mike.
Well, certainly, Mr. Itani can speak to that a little bit. But typically, in my understanding, is there's probably not going to be any retaining walls that are going to be constructed. There's going to be a slope that probably doesn't exceed a two-to-one slope, which is the maximum slope possible. So if there's any topographical issues there, they'll probably just grade it out to that two-to-one slope down to the building site. But if there are any retaining walls that are constructed, if it's constructed on those properties, then the eventual owner of the property would obtain, you know, responsibility for that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And we can have Mr. Itani address that when he comes up at the end of the public hearing, if you would. So, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, anybody else speaking in support of the project? All right, with that, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to the project? Okay, Mr. Itani, would you like to do a final...
Normally, these conditions do exist when the lots are short. You need to gain the backyard, or you put a retaining wall in the back. In this particular case, when we finish with grading, the terrain will be sloped in the back, like what was said by Mr. Ray. Slope at a maybe two-to-one or three-to-one. And so instead of the lot being, let's say, 114 feet or 120 feet, you will eat up maybe 20 feet out of that, which does leave you, you know, enough area to build a house, have about 30-foot backyard. So retaining walls, I don't think were going to be needed in here. But again, this will evaluate this one as we go. And it's important for us to have a lot that we can build on. I mean, I would tell you that we built Sixth Street, just an example here, coming from Mountain View around the corner. And we ended up with three lots, I believe, which we... Basically, at that time, we were not buildable. We had a tough time building, thinking of plans that would fit on those. I'm trying to avoid. We don't like to have those situations. And anything that we build on would have to be safe, plenty of yard in the back, you know, reasonable size was the cost that we have. Anyway, I hope that addresses that.
Great, thank you. And any questions for Mr. Itani before we move on? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So if there's no other comments, I guess we'll declare the public meeting closed, and we'll have discussion here with the commissioners. Anybody have any comments that they'd like to make or questions about the project?
Seems very straightforward.
I found it well-presented.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Okay, Nels?
We've been looking at this piece of property for many years, and so it's not unexpected, I guess, is what I would say. And in due time, the entire area will, I think, be built to the same grade. I don't know. I've been traveling around town and have driven all the streets up in here in the last, just because of our discussion with Harvest Hills. But it's really a pretty nice development in general, and I guess we have the great benefit in Moscow of growing so slowly that we don't build 20 houses in a row that all look alike. And so I don't know. I'm in love with our historic neighborhoods, but I think our new neighborhoods are quite handsome in general, and I feel like this will just be another part of that.
That's great. Mike, any...
I don't think so. Very straightforward, very well thought out. Part of a plan that's been in place for a long time.
That's great. So with that, does anybody have a motion to approve the proposal for the preliminary subdivision?
So moved.
So Joel moved?
With the conditions.
With the conditions.
With conditions, okay. As outlined by Mike. So that would be the stormwater and the extension of the Third Street by the 19.87. Okay, so we have a second?
All right, second. Go ahead.
Okay, Mike's second, so that was Joel's motion, and Mike's second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that has been passed. And I believe we need a motion for relevant standards and criteria?
Similar.
Okay, Victoria moved, and Nels moved. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? Okay, so Mike, is that enough direction for preparing the RCS?
It is, thank you.
Okay, at this point, I am going to absent myself from the meeting. Mike will take over, and I will see you all here shortly. So thank you.
Okay, at this point, we'll open the public hearing for the proposal for a preliminary subdivision plat for property located at 2075 Sunnyside Avenue and 706 West Plous River Drive within the city of Moscow. Permit applications, LUP 2021-0019. Mike?
Thank you again, commissioners. So before you tonight, we have a preliminary plat proposal for what's being referred to as the Anderson Edition Phase 6. It's 5.88 acres in area. The preliminary plat's proposal is to create 18 lots with an average lot size of 12,346 square feet. And these are the two properties highlighted in red in the center of your screen, divided by the current extension of Sunnyside Avenue, which has been platted but hasn't been extended. You've got kind of the southern terminus here, as well as the northern terminus here to the northeast. Gritman Medical Center, Martin Wellness Center here is located to the east. You've got various uses on the south side of Plous River Drive, including manufactured home parks. You have ITD Service Yard here to the south as well. Prospect Place Community is to the southwest. Anderson Frontier Park is here to the west. And then you've got other subdivisions that are located in Anderson Frontier Edition to the north of this property. So just a closer view, you can see the Sunnyside Avenue dedication that previously occurred within Anderson First Edition. The property to the north there is currently vacant. There is an older structure, like an old barn, I believe, on the southerly property at this location. This is a topography map of the area. So once again, these are one-foot contour. So moderate slope on these properties. Looking at the current comp plan designation, the northerly property is designated as auto-urban residential. Southerly property is designated as high-density residential. Not going to go through this again in detail. We just heard this in the last hearing. But generally, low to moderate density is intended in auto-urban residential designation. Could include a mixture, single-family, twin home, townhouse dwellings, and then it points to the R1, R2, and R3 zones as being appropriate. And then high-density residential, it's to allow high-density residential development at common densities between 15 and 26 units per acre. Areas appropriate would be those located adjacent to areas of higher activity and where there's a range of uses. Located adjacent or in close proximity to designated arterial or collector streets, which Plous River Drive currently is designated as a minor arterial. New areas of high-density residential development should be located near mixed-use activities areas and corridors that accommodate multimodal transportation. And then it points to the R3, R4, or RO designations as the appropriate zones for that designation. So that brings us to the zoning configuration of this property. It's really split between two designations, the R3, which is the lighter yellow color there on the north side, and then the R4 designation, which is multiple-family residential. Other properties in the area, Martin Wellness Center to the east is R4 as well. Property located with Anderson Frontier Additions to the north is R1, as well as Anderson Frontier Park to the west. You do have some pockets of R3 along the north side of Plous River Drive and some of those smaller subdivisions. And then the south side of Plous River Drive is motor business with ITD Service Yards, as well as the manufactured home parks. R3 zone really just provides for an increase in density over the R2 zone, allows for different types of housing construction. It's appropriate where activity levels are moderate. Terrain permits construction of somewhat larger structures, and where public systems and neighborhood facilities can accommodate a greater intensity of land use, of course, guided by the comp plan. And then the uses permitted in the R3 zone, really a range of residential uses, so includes single-family, two-family, twin homes, and townhouses. And then the R4 zone is our multiple-family residential zone. It's the most intense residential zone we have, to be applied where activity levels are high, adequate public facilities are available, generally located near University of Idaho campus or the central business zoning districts. And then looking at transportation is needed, should be given high priority in determining the appropriate location for R4 zones. I did want to cover the background of the current zone on this property. So in 1993, the subject property was rezoned to the current configuration that still exists today. A little bit of an odd configuration that doesn't really follow the way the parcels are platted currently. The council at the time imposed three conditions of approval on the rezone. And those three conditions, the first one pertained to density. So the density shall be limited to a minimum lot area of 2,000 square feet per dwelling, which is rather dense. The building shall be limited to one-story in height, exclusive of basements. And there shall be dedicated a pedestrian pathway, minimum of 10 feet in width, extending from Latok Care Center to Anderson Frontier Park. So it was previously Latok Care Center. Obviously, now it's Martin Wellness Center. So things have changed a little bit there. And I believe the intention of these limitations on the rezone at the time were originally intended to accommodate another development, similar to a Good Sam-type development for Latok Care Center, which was the original intention for the Prospect Place neighborhood, which also has these conditions on it as well. That Prospect Place development, I think the original intention was that was going to transition and develop, extend to the property to the north side of Sunnyside, which never occurred, obviously. But those were really the intentions behind, I believe, these conditions from the council at the time. But these properties, even though we've transitioned a little bit in the area, they're still subject to these rezone conditions. So that brings us to the Phase 6 preliminary plat. There's 18 lots. Those range between a little over 9,600 to 23,672 square feet in size. Looking at the minimum lot size for the R3 zone is 6,000. R4, it's an error there, should be 5,000 square feet. Minimum lot width is 60 feet for R3 and 50 feet for R4. And then there's proposed to be a 10-foot-wide public pedestrian easement, which connects Cloudy Court with Anderson Frontier Park. That's just essentially an easement. They've shown a five-foot path in order to comply with the condition of the rezone. It's going to be staff's recommendation that that be increased to the 10-foot width for the developed path. So that brings us to the preliminary plat. Can see the extension of Sunnyside down, connecting the northern and southern terminuses. I believe this is Cloudy Court. So there's a cul-de-sac street which accesses the northwest corner of the northern property. You can see the 10-foot-wide pedestrian easement connects the cul-de-sac with Anderson Frontier Park. You have 11 lots that are developed on the north side of Sunnyside, and seven lots that are developed on the south side. So you have a row of lots here, one triangular-shaped lot here adjacent to Plous River Drive. And then you have a city stormwater detention pond being proposed here to accommodate for the stormwater runoff that's generated from this proposed development.
Question?
Sure.
Do we still have a pathway to the Wellness Center? Are we... Is that still supposed to be there?
Still, yeah.
Because I couldn't find it.
There is a... So there's a portion of the property that abuts the Wellness Center up here, and you would just use the sidewalks coming down Sunnyside or potentially along Plous River Drive as soon as those are put in, to be able to connect to the Wellness Center.
Got you. Okay.
So looking at the north, this is just a closer view of the preliminary plat, see a little bit more detail. And then the southern portion of the proposal. Utilities in the area, water service currently exists. It's extended to the northern and southern terminuses of Sunnyside. The proposal is to extend it along the Sunnyside alignment within the street. And then, of course, our 2012 comprehensive water system plan indicates the existing system is adequate for potable and fire flows. Sanitary sewer is similar. Mains currently exist in northern and southern terminuses. It's proposed essentially along the same alignment. And then the comprehensive sewer system plan indicates that it's adequate to serve the additional flow. Storm sewer will be extended in a similar fashion, eventually end up in a storm main installed near the intersection of Pearl Circle, Sunnyside, and then directed to Track A, which is the stormwater detention pond that's being proposed on the northeast corner of Plous River Drive and Sunnyside Avenue. corner of, uh, Plous River Drive and Sunnyside Avenue. Uh, Sunnyside is a local s- street. It's constructed to match the standard that was approved at the time Anderson First subdivision was approved, so it looks a little bit different than our current street standards today. Uh, there's curb, gutter, tree lawn, sidewalks just on the north side of the street, and just curb and gutter on the south side of the street. And so if you notice, the entire Anderson Frontier Addition, uh, just has sidewalks on one side of the street, and that was just under a previous street standard. Um, our current street standard requires sidewalks on both sides, but, um, this, this property is vested, per se, in the, uh, previous standard. Cloudy Court is a local street cul-de-sac. And this property is also adjacent to Plous River Drive, which is designated as a minor arterial. Uh, it's currently not developed to the minor arterial standard. That standard is 34-foot-wide roadway section with curb, gutter, sidewalks on both sides of the street, as well as bike lanes. Uh, it's currently paved, but there are in, intermittent curbing in sidewalks, typically on one side of the street, generally on the north side. Uh, frontage improvements have occurred, uh, mainly on that north side of the street as a result of subdivision development. Uh, if you recall, the council, uh, ended up approving for the Ennington, uh, proposal further down Plous River Drive, uh, developer participation agreement where the developer would construct the public improvements, uh, on the south side of Plous River Drive, all the way out to the highway. So those will be, uh, improved as part of that project, and we'll just be left with a few intermittent sections of the north side of Plous River Drive that'll currently not have curb, uh, gutter, sidewalks, but we're slowly piecing that together. Uh, parkland dedication was previously met through the Anderson Frontier Park. And with that, staff recommends the commission conduct the public hearing, and upon consideration of testimony presented, recommend approval of the proposed plat with three conditions. Uh, the first one is pertaining to the, uh, triangular-shaped lot, so it's Lot 7, Block 5. Should be converted to a flag lot with the flagpole portion providing direct access to Sunnyside Avenue and no vehicular access should be permitted from Plous River Drive. Uh, just being the designation that Plous River Drive is with a minor arterial, we try to prevent as much access, especially, single-family residential access as possible, to avoid safety conflicts, uh, with the bike lanes and the two-way traffic that's generally traveling at higher speeds. And so that's where that recommendation is to extend a flagpole portion of that lot to have access just off of Sunnyside to that lot. So that's our, our reasoning behind number one. Uh, number two, there's a previous development agreement that requires the, uh, the improvement to Plous River Drive as part of this subdivision, but, uh, they're not shown on the proposed plans, so staff has recommended a condition that street frontage improvement shall be required on the north side of Plous River Drive adjacent to the subject property, uh, which includes the installation of curbing sidewalk and roadway widening to improve Plous River Drive to 34 feet in width. And then the final condition is that, uh, like we discussed before, the increase in the, uh, pedestrian pathway, uh, to 10 feet in constructed width, uh, in order to meet that rezone condition of 1993. So with that, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you have, and of course, uh, direct staff to prepare the RCS when we're done.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for Mike at this point?
Yeah, I, I do, um. I'm surprised that, uh, the, the, uh, R3, R4 line is not following the lots. Why is that? In other, or go, go back, wh- why is that, uh, line just running through middle of lots?
I don't know the exact reasoning for that. I, I believe that the rezone occurred prior to Anderson First Edition plating those two lots.
Well, I realize that, but, uh, it's certainly, I was probably here, but I can't remember why it should, in my mind, uh, running a, um, zone change through the middle of a lot seems a little strange, doesn't it?
Yeah, this cer- certainly does. Yeah, and I, I can't speak to why the council...
I mean, you can't have a half a lot being R4 and half a lot being, uh, R3. Joel, come on, help me out.
I can't remember either. I do remember dealing with this property, but, uh, I don't remember what we did.
Cause the, uh, the lots that are developed, the small lots, uh, on Garnet, those are all, that's in R4, right?
Correct.
It is in R4. And those are single-family homes, uh, essentially, but they're small.
Yeah.
As I recall, that's, they're, they're rather, um, I don't want to say tiny, but they, they're compact.
Yeah, they went through a PUD to achieve that. So the, the way that originally developed was, we allow multiple structures on a single lot within R4. So they ended up, uh, putting in the private streets and constructing the houses and ending, ending up recording a condominium plat on that property, and it's what we refer to as site condos. It's not the same as fee simple ownership, but it looks similar on paper, except when you pull up the covenants and the, the condo doc, declaration. Um, so they were having issues with, you know, after 2008, with really the financing issues with the Great Recession, um, condominium financing was one of those sticky issues with the banks. And so they, they were having trouble with some of the lots that were currently vacant, uh, getting financing for those, being the condominium plat. So they ended up coming together, uh, as an association and going back through the PUD and prelim- and plat process in order to provide fee simple ownership for all those properties. So, um, that's what occurred there.
Mm-hmm. But the, it occurs to me that the, uh, section of this development in red above Sunnyside should all be, all be R3. Why, uh, why wouldn't it be? Uh, is there an advantage to having, I, I can see R4 on Plous River Drive and, uh, next to the Wellness Center, but it doesn't make any sense to me to just have a, uh, zone racing off on its own volition.
So, I, I was not on the commission. I sat in the audience for years before I came up.
Right.
Uh, it seems to me that one time Moscow Affordable Housing Trust was trying to put property probably where the R4 is, if I remember right. Like I said, I wasn't on the commission.
Well, I don't have a...
And, and so that, maybe that was why there was a split. But I don't, I don't, I don't, like I said, I wasn't on the commission, so I don't remember.
Well, the, yeah, I mean, the, the...
Are you gonna explain this to us, Scott?
Well, Ed, it's, it's pretty much irrelevant to our decision here anyway.
Perhaps it may be.
Because I believe the, uh, proposed subdivision is consistent with either zone.
It is, huh?
It is odd, though.
Yeah. I don't want to get in the way of the hearing, but it's, uh, it's an odd thing that I don't think is quite, uh, copacetic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Ray? We'll go ahead at this point then and open it, open it up for the applicant.
Hi, I'm, uh, Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. And just a little bit of the history, uh, and I wasn't here, this was, uh, Sunnyside was approved in, uh, 1993.
You're gonna say, "I was here, but you weren't here."
But I do re- I do recall overhearing some of the discussions of how we got here.
Actually, I, actually, I'm on, I'm gonna correct that. I didn't come on the commission until 96, so I wasn't here.
Take any blame on this?
Okay.
Fair enough. No, at the time, uh, Latok Care Center, I think, had, uh, plans to expand some, or they were hoping to expand and make this entire neighborhood a kind of a graduated, um, elderly population, so that we would have, you know, single-family homes, and then as things, you know, if you progressed, maybe you would go to a little bit higher intensity care center. And that's, I believe, why the R4, R3 was split like that. They would continue on with the, the PUD to extend on the, the north side of Sunnyside, uh, similar to what's on the south side. But then, when they got into R3, uh, the, the lots and the homes could be a little bit bigger. There was still a restriction with the, the height restriction, particularly on the homes. Uh, but that was the grand plan. I don't know as though it was well thought out, as you can see where it just cuts across and leaves that weird little triangle on the, on the corner of Sunnyside there, but, uh, for the purposes of tonight's meeting, we decided that, right now, we didn't really want to rezone everything. R2 would be an appropriate zone for what we're putting in there. Uh, everything fits into the R2, but, um, it's possible that sometime in the future we could get those, those height restrictions removed, or, or some other, you know, some of the other restrictions. But right now, we just thought, let's get the plat approved. Um, the developer believes that he can construct homes...
You're telling me that you don't think the change in zone has any effect on this? And so I think we should just write it on our little list to look at it in future and , uh, straighten it out at some point, uh, cause I, I don't want to see that on my, uh, zoning map.
Yeah, I mean, we've al- like Scott mentioned, we've always suggested that it could be rezoned to R2. I mean, really, the underlying issue are the three conditions.
Right.
Mainly the, uh, single-story exclusive of, uh, basements, uh, restriction, which is, I, I think was originally intended to, um, you know, require more of a retirement community, single-level type housing, and preserve that character, which it's, you know, kind of transitioned from that at this point, so.
Okay. So we designed the lots to be large enough that, uh, you know, they would be really nice, single-family lots. Um, in our office, we've looked at this prob- you know, 10 different ways of how we could develop it, and this really, I believe, fits with the character of the entire neighborhood. Um, I know, at one time, we were looking at, uh, some, some very small townhouse lots and some other things that, uh, may not have been quite as popular with the neighborhood. Uh, so I think, uh, from our neighborhood meeting, when, uh, when we had that, people came in with the, you know, ready, you know, reared up to, to fight this, until they saw that, you know, this was actually going to be your typical, uh, subdivision, what you'd see in, in Moscow, so. I think, uh, we answered a lot of the questions at the neighborhood meeting, eased a lot of concerns, and, uh, like I said, the Sunnyside's been approved since 1993, so this isn't just a, a haphazard afterthought of a street or, or subdivision, really. It's, it's been looked at a lot, so. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but that's as much history as I know, and I'm not Larry Hodge, so. I can't go back that far.
Does the commission have any questions for, okay?
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. I think at this point, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment, and if this would be for people that are in favor of the plat. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak in favor of? We could get you to state your name and address, sir?
Matt Bernards, uh, 1939 Anderson Place. Uh, and I would agree with, uh, what the developers proposed. The neighborhood meeting was very well-received, uh, with what they are planning for this neighborhood. My one question that hopefully they can address when they come back up is, at the neighborhood meeting, they proposed, uh, rezoning this as part of the replating process, uh, really to ensure that the lot sizes stay, uh, large and the homes stay at that nicer quality level that the neighborhood, uh, is used to. Um, because, yes, a couple of years ago, when they wanted to put in the school and the Plous family housing, I know it was a lot less popular of a plan for the neighborhood, and, and the, he was 100% correct, the neighborhood was very much in favor of what we were told at that, uh, particular meeting. We just, I would love to hear an answer as to why we're not gonna do the rezoning that was talked about at that time as well.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, could we have anybody that would like to speak against the proposal? Please come on up. It appears that there is nobody that wants to speak against. Um, we'll have the applicant come back up and address the question.
Once again, Scott Becker, 405 South Washington. Uh, yeah, we, we decided not to, uh, attempt to rezone it at this time because there is some discussion, um, with the neighborhood to, uh, possibly re- remove or reduce those restrictions that, that are associated with this subdivision. So, um, having that R2 possibility out there is a, more of a carrot, that we can all agree that, you know, it's good for the neighborhood, it's good for everybody. We would like to, to keep that discussion out there. So that's why we just decided that the zoning doesn't really hurt anything we're doing. Um, if it gets rezoned in the future, like Nils said, it doesn't, uh, negatively affect anything, so, um, but we, um, there is some discussion on getting, you know, reducing or approaching the council with, uh, talking about the restrictions that are associated with this, so. Hope that answers the question.
Can we, can we, um, do we have to depend on the developer to, uh, sponsor a zone, uh, shift, or can we do something about that within, uh, the, uh, within our staff?
Well, we have staff-initiated rezones, but this is certainly not on our top priority to spend our time addressing. I mean, it's in an area that frankly fits in with the designations. It's right up against a, a minor arterial street, um, with Sunnyside and Plous River Drive, so, uh, you know, I would agree that the transition is actually adequate for this area, but certainly the configuration where it splits parcels is not, uh, you know, that, uh, is not in the best, best-case scenario. It's just that the transition from the, the higher arterial street into the neighborhood, uh, I would agree, the R4 to R3 is, provides a nice transition there, so.
Sure.
I think it's rather appropriate.
But I just think it should go on a property line.
Well, I guess I'm inclined to think that, uh, given that, uh, what's being proposed is, uh, is, is possible as the, uh, zones are, uh, drawn, uh, and, uh, certainly, I don't think it's the only exception where, uh, property is split into two different zones. I think, I think we've seen other examples. So I, I'm, I guess I'm inclined to wait for the, uh, developer to, to address it.
Any other comments for Scott?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point, I think we'll go ahead and close the public meeting and open up discussion amongst the commissioners.
Property has had a, a long history, and, uh, it's, uh, it's remained, uh, undeveloped, partly because of some of that history. Uh, I think the, the proposal was reasonable for the, for the property. Um, I, I, I think, uh, we should approve it.
Yeah, I don't have any argument with it. Victoria?
I agree. And it'd be nice to see North Plous River Drive get some development, too.
Yeah. I'd like, I'd like to see some more paving.
Yeah.
And sidewalks and curbs.
So at this point, I would go ahead and open, um, for an opportunity to put a motion on the table?
I will move approval with the suggested, uh, conditions.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion was carried. We need at this point to have our director's staff for the RCS, or R-C-N...
Yeah, so moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Joel, seconded by Victoria. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. At this point, I'd like to thank everybody in the gallery for coming. It's, it's nice to have people here and, and get some input and make sure that, you know, I, I call myself the newbie after only being on here about three years, but I'm, I'm learning every day, and I appreciate you folks helping me learn that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, you certainly come up to the podium and ask a question.
Okay. Thank you for the privilege. Just wanted to clarify a few things on a couple things.
My name is Tim Snell, and, uh, we're new residents at 2075 West Sunnyside, or Sunnyside Avenue. We're in Unit 2, which was just completed not long ago by Pat Planigan, and I just wanted to double-check with you, uh, Mike, um, the widening of Plous River Drive, did you say that the, it's going to be widened to the, to the south side of the road?
Uh, I don't know that a lot of widening is needed. You know, that section's already pretty much at 34 feet in width. You know, that section's already pretty much at 34 feet in width, but there will be curbing and sidewalks and tree lawns and gutters installed along the south side of Palouse River Drive.
On the south side?
On the south side.
Okay, okay. Because there's sidewalk right next to our house on the north side.
Yep.
But that sidewalk is intermittent, it doesn't go all the way down. And the other question I had, I think it was addressed, yeah, the footpath is going to go all the way from the Wellness Center to the park if you follow the street and then over. Okay, that was the only question I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This time, I will turn the meeting back over to the chair.
You did such a wonderful job. Happy to... Would you want to come over?
No, you're doing, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Mike. I really appreciate that. We don't have those kinds of issues frequently, but it's always nice to be able to do that. So the next item on the agenda is approval of the reasoned statement of relevant criteria and standards. This would relate to our approval of the comprehensive plan designation, designated in the preliminary plat for the 235-acre property that was at the last meeting. So do we have any issues or questions on the RCS? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
Also moved.
Okay, so approval...
Subject to the scrutiny, corrections that have been added.
Corrections that have been passed to Jennifer, okay. So do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, Victoria, a second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Obste.
Okay, very good. So, thank you very much. So Joel, you're back up, Transportation Commission.
Well, that's easy, because the commission, last meeting was May 13th, and I missed it, as I reported last time I reported, but, and it contained a discussion of the subdivisions we heard tonight, so I wouldn't have been able to attend, anyway. So the next meeting is scheduled, I believe, June 10th, and I have not yet seen the agenda.
That'll really work out great, because our next meeting's June 9th, so.
Right.
It's always an easy one, right?
Except sometimes.
Great, thanks, Joel. Any announcements or correspondence, Mike?
None from staff.
Okay, and our next meeting is scheduled for June 9th, and I just wanted to say, it's so nice to have everybody up here at the deus. This is a treat. It's been significantly more than a year that we have done this, so it's nice to see people's faces now, changed as they may be.
For people who can't hear, I, my God, I might even be able to get the vaguest idea of what you're saying now. I'm loving it.
With that, oh, one other quick thing. These were left for us to read in your leisure. Maybe we'll be, we can talk about whether we would discuss that for a continuing ed in the future, but just wanted to acknowledge it. Did you put those up there, Mike?
It's actually from the Latok County Board of Realtors.
Oh, super. Okay. All right, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks very much, everybody.